Okay, it is six o'clock, so welcome to the September 12th Select Board meeting. Please join me in the.
As leadens to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So just so people know, this meeting is being recorded live stream. If you have questions at home about this meeting, you can email us at selectboard@easton.ma.us. At this time, I'd just like to have each board member introduce themselves to ensure that we have a quorum. So starting with you, Jen.
Jennifer Stancing.
Mark Lamb.
I'm Dottie Goldenetti.
I'm Craig Barger.
And we have our town administrator Connor Reed, Assistant Town Administrator Michael Blanchard, and Executive Assistant Elizabeth. So the first item that we have on the agenda tonight is Suicide Prevention Awareness Month Proclamation. So Cory, do you want to come up and talk about that?
Yes, please.
So if you want to put the table there. So we do have a proclamation in the packet that Craig can read after we get the introduction.
Great. Thank you for inviting me to be a part of this tonight. I feel honored to be asked to come and represent some of the programs or resources that may be available for our veterans as well as other community members. So my name is Cory Honan, Deputy Director, Health and Community Services for Financial and Veteran Services. And, you know, as I said, I just want to thank the Select Board, Town Administrator, for shining a spotlight on the fact that this is Suicide Awareness Month. I think it's a huge thing that we need to recognize and it's, you know, the public health epidemic, horrible thing going on worldwide. Numbers have increased exponentially over the past decades. So it's definitely something that we need to have at the forefront, especially in community services. So, you know, during the month of September, obviously being the Suicide Awareness Month, it's important more than ever that we are aware of the support systems in place and the resources that we have available. I'd just like to point to a statistic from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health from 2019 that one in 10 suicides involve a veteran in Massachusetts. Considering that veterans only make up 6.7% of the population, this number is far too high. And obviously, one veteran suicide is one too many. As I said before, suicide is a worldwide public health crisis. And many times when a suicide happens, which I'm sure some of us in this room can relate to having had experience connected to that, you may not have the idea that the person was struggling. And, you know, mental health disorders can be insidious in that way. A loss from suicide can leave bystanders thinking that they could have done more, questioning how they missed the signs. And oftentimes, the most valuable thing that we could do as a bystander or a close loved one to someone who committed suicide beforehand was just being available and willing to help them seek assistance. Veterans, like most people, won't usually openly display signs or symptoms or your typical tells that, you know, they have an intent to self-harm or commit suicide. So it's important that we check on our friends, you know? We have to check on our family and our friends that are, they're strong, you know? They don't need us to check on them. Well, we need to check on those people probably the most. So I'd encourage everyone who's listening tonight, everyone here, just reach out and ask someone how they're doing and actually listen to the answer, not just the day-to-day, how we all do to each other. How are you? Good. How are you? Good. Okay, see you later. You know, it's no, really, how are you? It can make a difference. So any person, veteran or not, who's in a mental health crisis, most recently, they can dial 988. All right, this is the 911 version for mental health crisis. Veterans can press 1 and be connected to a professional call center listener who can offer resources, support, or just be an anonymous person to listen to a situation. Research points to great success with these anonymous connections that can be made, even though to some people it may sound like, oh, that, how can that even be that successful? Who's going to stop and answer the phone? But you'd be surprised. It's, you know, stories I hear in my networks of veteran services. It's amazingly successful. So be sure to share that with your folks in your communication circles as well. The VA offers a coaching into care program where they will talk with individuals. Licensed professionals will talk with a veteran or the family member, and they will coach the individual into care and kind of start, meet them where they're at, because that's most important. People don't need to be scooped up off, you know, out of their daily lives and completely disrupted in order to receive help. They can, you know, there's outpatient services, inpatient services, telephone, there's telehealth now. We do, we do things in a variety of ways now. And to speak to these folks, VA coach, you can call 888-823-7458, Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. That's Eastern Standard Time. And then locally, the state, the Massachusetts Department of Veteran Services has regional SAVE team members. Pretty amazing what these folks do. They will go out into the community and will meet a veteran or a family member of a veteran who, you know, we call, like the Veteran Service Officer, will call, or the town will call, or even the Veteran Directly. And these folks will go out and look for them and find them and sit with them and talk with them. And these are employees of our Commonwealth. It's a pretty amazing job to have. And these people, no doubt, save lives. And, you know, some of them have lived experience in dealing with self-harm or suicide, so they're the prime candidate to fill these roles. They can be reached at the SAVE Program main line at 617-210-5743. And then finally, I wanted to include something that is open to all non-veteran. You don't have to be a veteran. You may be a veteran, any way you identify yourself. This is open to everybody. Crisis Text Line. It's a nonprofit that provides a free confidential texting service, because we all like to text and directly communicate. It might be easier to express yourself over a text message and ask for help rather than to call and identify by your voice. It's a confidential texting service for emotional crisis support. And to speak with a trained listener, text HELLO, H-E-L-L-O, to 741741, and it's available 24/7. So, and this is just, I've just, this is the tip of the iceberg for resources and services that are out there. There's an abundance of resources. And, you know, I think, I'm sure, we've probably all heard, you know, suicide is a permanent solution to what could potentially be just a temporary problem. There's always some way to turn, somewhere to go. I've seen in my careers, you know, in corrections, I've seen people who are facing jail time for some of, they feel like they've done the worst things in their lives and their life is over. And then in this job, helping veterans, you know, work through traumas and struggles, I've seen, I've seen that end of it where they feel like they can't work through the problems they're having. And then, you know, there are some failures. There are some people that we lose. And there's some people that become great successes and they go on to do wonderful things in their communities and their families. So it's worth trying these resources. So in summary, I just want to just sum up and just say the best things we can do as supporters are just be available to lend an ear. Offer support even if it's met with opposition. Just keep offering that support. The old saying, you know, you can't lead a horse to water, or you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink. Well, to add to that, it's like, but don't take away the water. Just keep offering and keep the potential solution there for these folks, because it's not easy to ask for help. Provide encouragement without judgment. Offer compassion and understanding while continuing to check in. And for any information, I know this is a brief overview, but any information that I've mentioned tonight, I'd be glad to speak with anyone. So feel free, come by my office at 15 Barrow Street. We'll have a cup of coffee and we can talk and, you know, go over everything in great depth. Or I can be reached by telephone at 508-230-0690. And that's, that's all I have to say. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We can put some of those resources on social media as well.
Absolutely.
Because they are good resources and that 988 number is, that sort of is, right?
Yes.
That is hard to get used to, but that's a good number that has recently come out. So Massachusetts does a lot for our veterans compared to some other states. And we do have a lot of resources and having our very own Veteran Services Officer, you know, focused on that along with greater public health. I think one thing that I would probably add is that for our younger people, if a young person hears their friends talking like that, tell an adult right away. And don't take any chances. So people are really struggling and coming out of COVID, I think it's a real time to reflect on this. Any comments or questions? Start with you, Jen.
Just say that, you know, this is a really important step. It's like the most critical step in talking about it, raising awareness, sharing resources. And it does a lot to remove the stigma. A lot of folks feel like they can't because it shows weakness or they are afraid or whatever it is. A couple of years ago, some friends and I participated in a fundraising event and did the 20-mile walk through Boston. And it was a really incredibly humbling and healing experience for a lot of people. One of the most incredible experiences of my life, honestly. And as we were going through that process, a lot of people reached out and said, "Thank you for doing this," because I needed this part of healing for myself as the experience of losing someone that I loved. And I want to make sure that no one else goes through this pain again. So, so thank you. This was really incredible.
Well, thank you.
Cory, I appreciate it, obviously, you and I both being veterans and having lost a number of military members that we've worked with. And I know this is not a resource solely geared at veterans, but for everyone, which is huge and that you don't care who watched you do it, which is amazing. And you've made the community well aware that you're there for everybody. So I greatly appreciate what you're doing, the position you're in, and the way you do it.
Thank you, Jane. Appreciate it.
Yeah, much in the same. I mean, a lot of these people, they think they're completely alone and they feel alone, but they're not alone. And I think your messaging and the timing of what you're doing is absolutely necessary. And you're the man for the job. And thank you for doing all that you do.
Thank you, Mark.
You know, Cory, my 49 years working in juvenile corrections, I saw too many kids that were thought that the world would end because they were committed or because they were involved in some crime. And I appreciate that the community has really stepped it up recently. And thank you very much for the job that you do.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
So Craig, if you'll read the proclamation.
Proclamation 2022, whereas suicide is a national public health challenge that causes immeasurable pain among individuals, families, and communities across the country. And whereas suicide is the 10th leading cause of death in the United States, second for people ages 10 to 35. And on average, 129 Americans die by Suicide Death Day, accounting for 47,173 suicide deaths in 2017. And whereas the number of veterans and military suicides has exceeded 6,000 each year from 2008 to 2017. And whereas suicide is the 12th leading cause of death in Massachusetts, second leading cause of death for ages 10 to 34, the fourth leading cause of death for ages 5 to 54, and the eighth leading cause of death for ages 55 to 64. And whereas the town of Easton supports the Massachusetts Suicide Prevention Program that provides support to community agencies, education and training for professionals and caregivers, and funds programs working with youth, veterans, and older adults. And whereas, we recognize September as National Suicide Prevention Month for every individual struggling with suicide in an effort to bring awareness to the possibility of prevention and stand in solidarity with all those who are affected by this public health crisis. And whereas, suicide prevention is possible, as suicide is not inevitable for anyone. And whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, sexual orientation, income level, or background. But understanding the risk factors and the warning signs for suicidal behavior can greatly help us all care for our family, friends, and neighbors. Now therefore, we, the Select Board of the Town of Easton, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2022 as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in the Town of Easton and urge all citizens to take cognizance of this event and participate fittingly in its observation, given under our hand and seal the Town of Easton the 12th day of September in the year of our Lord 2022.
Great.
Outstanding.
So thank you, Craig, for reading that. We'll sign that and we'll post that on social media. And we really appreciate you taking the time to be here tonight.
Thank you all. Appreciate the support. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have a public hearing at 6 o'clock for our new Section 12 on-premises restaurant and alcoholic beverages license. Craig, do you want to read the public hearing notice?
Did I see that one?
Sorry, did I cut you off, guys?
Yeah, you did. The Select Board of Easton has licensing authorities who hold a public hearing in the Colleen A. Corona Boardroom, 136 Allen Street, Easton, Mass. On Monday, September 12, 2022, at 6:00 PM to consider and act upon the application of D'Renzo's Restaurant Group, LLC, for a new Section 12 on-premises restaurant, all-alcoholic beverage license for a restaurant situated at 3 Roosevelt Circle, Easton, Mass. With a plan on file at the Select Board's office.
So in our packet, we have a public hearing notice and an application for this Section 12 on-premises restaurant, all-alcoholic beverages license and common vics rulers license for D'Renzo Restaurant Group. The public hearing notice was posted, advertised, and mailed to direct debutters. The application has been circulated to town departments for review with no concerns, pending all final building department and board of health inspections prior to opening. By way of background, this site is contained within the existing Queesit 40R Smart Growth Overlay District, a zoning district adopted by town meeting in 2008. The developments in the district are related to an associated Queesit Development Agreement between the developer, Douglas A. King Builders, and the Select Board, which stipulates, among many other requirements, that the developer build a mixture of residential and commercial property. Within those parameters, the Planning Board originally approved the plan for 3 Roosevelt Circle in August 2016. In May 2022, the Planning Board reviewed a revised site plan from the property owner and developer, Douglas A. King Builders, for 3 Roosevelt Circle, which included this proposed restaurant and a change in building footprint, although the same square footage, and voted to determine that the proposed changes were minor and therefore consistent with the existing 2016 special permit approved for the project. While the proposed outdoor dining has been temporarily approved under Massachusetts COVID-19 legislation and the Select Board's temporary order, sorry, temporary outdoor dining policy, the applicant will need to go back before the Planning Board for a site plan review for permanent outdoor dining approval. Business owners Lisa D'Renzo and Anthony D'Renzo, as well as attorney Walter Marioni or Frederick Cassavan are here tonight to answer questions for us. So if you want to come up to the two seats, we took the microphone. So as I mentioned before this started, this is solely to talk about the licenses tonight. And we won't be taking public comment for any questions about the permitting or the planning process. So welcome. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, members of the board. My name is Frederick Cassavan. This is Lisa D'Renzo. And Anthony D'Renzo is here as well, if you need him to answer questions too.
Sure.
So again, thank you for having us. So we're seeking, as you said, a Section 12 on-premises alcohol license for the subject property. The property is owned by Mr. King and the restaurant is being developed. It'll be part of that development in there. The restaurant will be 200 seats and there will be 40 planned to be outdoor. And again, we'll have to go in front of the Planning Board to amend for the outdoor seating. The restaurant's focus is going to be culinary as opposed to bar. It's really supposed to be a nice dining experience, get some experienced chefs that are, you know, really put out some good product for the, for the community. And I discuss this with my clients, that, you know, we're aware of the dynamic in the town with the college, a lot of underage, you know, college-age students out there. So we've stressed and they've agreed, it's, you know, they're going to really train the staff, get them tip certified, so anyone serving alcohol, a waiter, or bartender is going to have that training and certification. So if there's any other questions, we're happy to answer. Again, Lisa will be the onsite manager, supported by Tony. And again, he can answer questions as well.
So just tell us a little bit about the restaurant, your experience with some of the other restaurants that you own, and then we'll get to the specifics about the liquor license.
Right. Presently, I'm at Instotin at Listalla. It's a menu concept change. They were struggling. And that's just been about a month and a half. And trying to help them, consulting with them to get them back on their feet and grow a business. It's a beautiful restaurant there, in Instotin, Listalla. And previously, 10 years I've been with Novara and Abbey Park in East Milton Square and helped build those restaurants. And prior to that, I was 10 years in New Bedford on the working waterfront at Waterfront Grill. And before that was Stoneforge. All three, Easton, Rainham, and I ran their connoisseurie that they once had to produce. They had five restaurants at one time. And then there's more before that, but usually a 10-year commitment, I believe. Very loyal, very dedicated. I love to watch a business grow. And food is the universal language of love, and that's all I speak. So I will be at this restaurant all the time. It's what I do. It's what I, my passion and what I love. So, yeah. And all my bartenders, I've already recruited them, even though we're not really close, but they are seasoned bartenders. I know that's huge. And I don't mess around. I wouldn't take any risks. So I will be actively on the floor all the time. Like I said, it's what I do. It's my life. And I'm very happy with what I do.
That's great, because that's one of the things that we say to anyone getting a liquor license, is that we take that very seriously because we are a college community. Unfortunately, we just had seven organizations that did not meet compliance. And we say when we issue the license, we don't want to see you back here again under those circumstances because it's terrible for you, it's terrible for us, it's bad for the community.
Yeah, it's not going to happen.
And so we appreciate people that have a longstanding history and a track record of understanding how to train their staff, because nobody does this on purpose. And, you know, it's really important that your staff is trained properly. So with your experience, you know that.
Yes.
And I've been to Novara, gorgeous restaurant, wonderful food. And I haven't been to the restaurant in Instotin yet, but I know it just opened recently, a few months ago.
We're getting some really good reviews over there, you know? It's a family-owned, small-operated business, and I adore them and I really want them to succeed.
Yeah.
So I figure I spend my time there until we're ready. And, yeah.
Well, that's great. Excellent. Any comments or questions from anyone on the board? Start with you, Jen.
No, I was glad to hear you called, that you understood the importance of the training and certifications. Thank you for making that clear.
Yeah, no questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, it's D'Renzo Restaurant Group?
Yes.
What's the name of the restaurant?
D'Renzo Restaurant.
Is it going to be D'Renzo?
It's G-I-N-N-A.
Okay.
No questions.
It's going to be global food fusion. It's going to be amazing. I'm excited, beyond. I'm saving quite a bit of stuff for this place.
Great.
I don't have any questions, but I just want to thank you for doing business in Easton. Appreciate it.
It's absolutely a beautiful town.
So when are you scheduled to open?
The building gets handed to us on January 1st, and then we have to build up. The building gets handed to us on January 1st, and then we build up the inside. So it should be around April, May.
Okay.
Yeah.
Terrific.
So far, it's on schedule.
Awesome.
As far as I know. Doug does good, great work though, so, you know, it's going to be beautiful.
Great.
And Steve Tedesco is the designer. He's the same guy that designed Novara.
Excellent.
So it's going to mimic Novara in a way. Not quite exactly, but it's one big open space.
All right, great.
But you've been there, so you know.
Yeah.
It's good for me. I can keep my eyes on everything.
Well, we thank you for choosing Easton. Mark is the Chair of the Economic Development Council, so he will be welcoming you as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. If none of the board members have any other questions, would somebody like to make a motion to approve this Section 12 on-premises restaurant and alcoholic beverages license?
Excuse me, you're Lisa. Will you make them both?
Is it specific to the actual license? Because we're not going to take any questions about. We're not going to take any questions about the building.
It's about the license.
Sure. Can you get up and say your name and address and your question?
And others will want to speak as well, not just me. I, for the life of me.
Wait, can you say your name and address?
I'm sorry, my name is Diane Howard, 14 Eisenhower Drive. And a butter to this restaurant, as well as to Stoneforge Grill. Now, I, for the life of me, cannot understand why you, the board, representing the Town of Easton, would consider giving the developer another liquor license when a license has already been given to a restaurant next door and is also with the liquor store at the end of the block? That means there would be two restaurants and a liquor store right across the street from Stonehill College. There are, where there are a multitude of Stonehill students, as well as many children in the neighborhood which abuts this restaurant. This appears to be totally irresponsible and totally wrong. You can congratulate somebody for getting, building a restaurant, but you don't congratulate them for getting a liquor license within Stonehill College land and next door to another restaurant and a liquor store on the same block. Just because something may be legal doesn't make it right. I ask the board to do the right thing and deny this liquor license.
Thank you. Any other questions pertaining just to the liquor license? You have to come up to the microphone.
Ellen Ritchie.
Come up to the microphone. The microphone's not amplified for the room, but that's how cable gets.
Ellen Ritchie, I live at 10 Eisenhower Drive, which is directly behind the fence of this property or to the side of it or the rear of it. I'm not sure how it's going to pan out. But I should note and make you aware, I don't know if you do know, that there's a minimum of 10 restaurants between 106 and Main Street, a minimum of 10, that have an alcohol license. And like my neighbor said, I can't understand why Easton needs another alcohol license, especially across the street from a college where half of the students are underage. Half of them are overage and legal. The other half is not. It just is encouraging. It's just more encouragement for them to drink. I know they know that we're a neighborhood. We're directly three feet away from the boundary line, literally. We're a neighborhood. You've been there for years and years and years. I don't oppose anyone wanting to make a living. Restaurant, fine. Why do they need alcohol? So if I could, I would protest the restaurant, but I can't. You said it's been okay for, since what, 2008?
2006, I think.
2006. But I do oppose the alcohol license. It's not necessary. They don't need it to make a living. I hope you deny it. Thank you.
I'm Scott Fletcher. I'm the directed butter to the restaurant. My wife Lisa is here with me. And my lieutenant Steve is here with me. And I'm wondering, can you hand me a cake?
It's just for cable. It's not for here.
I didn't know anything about this restaurant until my neighbor told me about it. I think it's all been done under the table. And there's a lot of concessions in this restaurant that affect us directly.
Okay, what, it has to be specific to the liquor license?
Specific to the alcohol. Our property, we have a building, two apartments, that's directly adjacent to the restaurant. That's not shown on the plan. And that building is 80 feet in direct line to the outside dining. And our house is 80 feet to the outside dining. And where we sit, our one area that we use as patio, we measured today. It's 30 feet from the outside dining. So we use all our privacy. And so I have other grievances about the building, which I'm going to tend to address.
Which were not.
That aren't related to the alcohol.
Right.
But I have strong sense that they will be serving alcohol, because I don't think they would have gone this far if they weren't fairly certain that they would be there to serve alcohol. So I would like to request of the board to take careful consideration of the alcohol stays in the building and limit the amount of alcohol. Lisa and I will be wakened several times in the summer or during the school season by students, boisterous students walking back from these restaurants at late late hours. So I recommend that if there's any alcohol license granted, in which there wasn't, that the alcohol's indoors, it's not in the outside dining, and the bar closes at 9:00 PM, something reasonable so that when people leave, they're sober and we don't have to listen to them. This windows on the back of that restaurant, near the pizza oven, that I don't know what the sound is gonna carry. Obviously, with alcohol, people get more boisterous, so we can hear. This is actually a blessing, blocking the sound from Stoneforge across. But it's directly imposing on our peace out in front of that restaurant. And I'm really surprised that it was ever approved or been in consideration that people, that forty people can sit that close to my house, close to my kids.
Thank you.
I have one more thing on the question I have to ask. Please, if, if the license is approved, which I'm assuming your minds have already been made up, but if it is approved, how late will this, the bar be open? Bear in mind that we are right next door.
Is that in the packet, Connor?
What are gonna be the hours of the, of the bar or lounge or whatever it is?
I don't have that. Oh, wait a minute.
Stage, the stage form does not require that. There are certain limitations on it by law.
I know, but do you know what those limitations are, and will they be applied to this establishment?
Well, they would have to be, because they can't go above...
Is it one AM, do you think? Or twelve, twelve to midnight?
If I could, I believe the minimum is eleven to eleven. Like that, a Section 12 license gets you that on it. If you have that license, you get eleven to eleven. And then I, up to the board, if they wanted to extend that later or earlier. That's my understanding of Section 12.
So on your application, you would go for eleven o'clock closing for the bar? Is that what you're saying?
Do you want her to direct us through the board?
I'm just wondering...
Eleven to eleven is, is the opening and closing of the, of the business.
It's including what?
If it's eleven to eleven, that would be the opening and closing. I'm trying to look for the, the note, and we've got, you know, hundreds of pages in the packet, and I didn't look...
Well, I just would think that would be noted in the application for the permit, what the hours would be.
It doesn't need to, because of the kind of permit that this is.
But what is it, generally for the town of Easton? Isn't there a policy for all the establishments that have an alcohol license?
I would like if we could take some moments just to confirm that, rather than go back and...
Okay.
State's handbook, it's forty pages long. It doesn't have it in there. Yeah, it's eleven.
Yes, so it is eleven to eleven automatically. The applicant may request extended hours. It can open as early as eight AM and closing at two AM.
With special permission.
So the Section 12 we're loading on is eleven to eleven?
Yes, that's under state law.
Under, under state law, right.
Yes.
Scott Fletcher again. Does this committee have the authority to restrict the hours of alcohol being served or the conditions in which the alcohol is? Above the state mandates for, for the open hours? So, so just to read this, that licenses cannot be barred from serving alcohol between eleven and eleven? So they are guaranteed that?
So we can, we can accept or not accept extensions if people want to say later or open earlier.
Do you, do you have the authority to limit on what part of premises alcohol is served, indoors or outdoors?
Yes, the, the application is for a certain set of identified premises.
Okay. Has anybody, has the, has the board had a site visit? And would the board willing to postpone decision until they've had a site visit? They can review the application and consider whether or not it would be appropriate to serve alcohol on the outside dining, if the outside dining is later approved?
So, I think, as you all know quite well, it's an active construction site. It's not as if there's a building there for the board to visit. There's still a process where the applicant needs to go to get a permit for the planning and zoning board for permanent outdoor dining, which would include alcohol, right? If the planning board doesn't approve, part of their process is the appropriateness of whether or not there should be outdoor dining and service. You know, the board could, with the applicant or business permission, go visit the construction site. I just don't know how instructive that is for the board making a decision about alcohol when the planning board is the one who's ultimately making a decision on the outdoor dining, which is a predicate to the alcohol service. And as, just an important process reminder as well, this type of establishment, a restaurant with outdoor dining is, you know, not something that can just be kind of decided no matter what. This zoning was adopted by voters of Easton and amended to make this process actually smoother for applicants to go to the planning board rather than through a zoning legal hearing as recently as this May. So this is not something that Town Hall, you know, early decides, or says we think this is the right thing, therefore it is. This is something that was vetted through public meetings with the planning board and then adopted by voters at, at multiple points. Whether you talk about the queasit overlay for the forty hour in 2008, the site plan hearing for this property in 2006 with the planning board, or the most recent town meeting in May where this was considered. So it is, it's the board's choice. They could, of course, table or postpone a hearing. But just from a premise perspective, the, the application here, correct me if I'm wrong, is for the premise as it currently has a special permit, which is for the footprint and patio with the full understanding that the applicant needs to go back to the planning board for permanent outdoor dining. Correct.
Correct. So if I may, so any outdoor dining right now is temporary?
Right.
And then after it's constructed or however that process goes, they need permanent outdoor dining?
Right, they would just seek a special permit from the planning board.
So this whole other process where your argument could be presented when they come up for permanent outdoor dining, correct?
Yes, and I have, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I trust you're probably planning to go seek that permit in a, in a construction...
That's right.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, just to clarify for me, so the purpose of this meeting is to approve a liquor license?
Correct.
Okay, outside dining is approved by the planning board? Where it's in its zone for outside dining?
In its zone for, that's correct.
I think there was an inference in that outside dining is directly connected to the ability to serve alcohol. If that was the case, then you could deny this permit and they could still have outside dining, theoretically, if you had cause.
I apologize. I wasn't attempting to draw the inference, so just based on their application, it seems a plan. It would have to be allocated.
But if the, if the board so willed and went and had a site visit and said, you know, we didn't know that there was an apartment building right there, and we didn't realize how close this is to the property line. It's actually three feet close to the property line that the plan is called for. And now that we can see it, we can see how, butter, how serving alcohol outside here would greatly be a detriment of the neighborhood. So do you have the authority to limit the alcohol, to your approval for alcohol at this time so in the future, when outside dining is granted, it's not approved? It's, it's not approved for alcohol at that time?
Well, they would, they would need to have a separate application and hearing for something that's already being announced.
That's my request. My request is that you have a site visit, and you personally evaluate whether you think it's appropriate, given that we live there and we have potentially four families living, to have outside dining with alcohol till eleven PM? And look, and look at the proximity of our property, because on paper, you can't visualize that. And then if you decide, you know what, it doesn't make sense to serve alcohol or to live in a club with these folks next door, then they can submit, or you can deny it. They can submit a revised plan to have alcohol only within the building or on the other side of the building, where I think... Is there some kind of patio space on the, on the...
It's on the side of 138.
So that's what I'm requesting. My request to the board, go and look inside. Look at how close it is to the house. Look at how close it is to the, to the rental property. Look how close it is to the other neighbors. And, and think if you, if you want to be, if you would stay in that house if there was, if there was alcohol served in that forty feet, so at eleven PM. So give it some consideration, please. And if you, if you deny it, if you deny it, they can resubmit and say, well, we were requesting a liquor license for indoors. And if, you know, personally, as I expressed, being that close to a residential neighborhood, I think earlier evening hours would be appropriate. I think, I think, I think that's not allowed. They're, they're entitled to go to eleven PM, right? So, okay, so thank you very much for coming.
I don't have a question.
Anyone on the board have any comments or questions?
Well, I'm, I'm trying to completely, to understand both the question and, and the process here. That we can approve liquor license inside the building from eleven to eleven. But anything for outside dining has to go to the planning board. Is that...
The, the liquor application in front of a board is requesting the ability to serve alcohol on premises with the premise including the patio. They still would, it would basically be a contingent approval for the premise as requested. And if in their pursuit of the special permit for outdoor service, including food and alcohol, the planning board denied some or part of that, they would probably need to revise that application for the board.
So there would be site plan review by the planning board?
The, the crux of it for me, when it comes to outdoor dining, is, okay, so outdoor dining's okay till eleven. So people talk, they socialize. I would have to be in agreement that once you introduce a glass of wine or alcohol into that outdoor dining, then it becomes a very loud vociferous experience, which I'm not in agreement of. I've been to Stoneforge over this outdoor dining, and it's not this, you know, college setting where there's, you know, wild rampant kids. It's adults having beverages while they dine. So I, I don't, I think for you, sir, it's, it's just purely your proximity. It, it's just so close that whether it's dining or alcohol, they're both a, it's undesirable for you.
So what are you proposing?
I'm, I'm in support of the license as it is, eleven to eleven. For the whole, for the whole, I know it's very unpopular, but for the whole facility. Further, the idea of not having an alcohol license, I can't, I cannot think of a single restaurant that exists that is not a breakfast restaurant that can succeed financially without alcohol license, unless you're a subsonic. But a fine dining experience, you need an alcohol license to survive, otherwise, don't open up. And I think we all know that. I'm just, these are my thoughts, and by all means, anybody else jump in, but...
Well, that was the whole point to having the forty-hour district, is to have commercial and then the investment that the town made in sewer, to bring the sewer down that area so that we could have restaurants for meals tax and for economic enhancement for that area. So that is something that's been talked about for well before I was on the board, well before any of you were on the board. So that is, is part of the plan. Now, it says on here that there will be site plan review. Because of the COVID restrictions, a restaurant is allowed to have open outside dining. But to make, when those restrictions end, which I can't off the top of my head, it's, it's not years. It's probably the spring of, I don't even want to...
I, I think it's spring of twenty-three. As the applicant has indicated, they would be applying for that.
So they'd have to apply for it. That would have to go before site plan review. When this is, is being built and put together, there's site plan review, so the planning board could take that into consideration also. Maybe put some type of a buffer around the patio so that the noise is broken up before, you know, before the neighborhood. But we, we've been working really hard in Easton to try to incentivize new businesses to come here to help with the tax burden that residents have. That is, for years, we've been talking about the queasit area for that. So I would not be inclined to break that up at this point. If there was a problem with it, we could look at it at some point down the line. But you're hearing from the public that they are concerned about the noise, so please take that into consideration.
Totally understandable.
And the planning board, I'm sure, they will take that into consideration as well.
We're gonna have to walk away from Stoneforge. During the summer, we can't open our windows.
I'm sorry, you have a much...
We can't open our windows because of the noise coming from the patio at Stoneforge. So imagine what it's gonna be from the patio of this establishment. We hear them laughing, screaming, talking loud, just like now, out loud. And this goes on until eleven or twelve o'clock at night, from Stoneforge to our houses, okay? His, mine, hers. We can all hear it, so we don't open our windows. We stay in the H.C. I'm just making a point that imagine what it's gonna be with this establishment, with the outdoor dining and drinking, okay? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
If there is a concern about noise, isn't there a noise ordinance that keeps in after a certain hour?
We, we don't have a noise ordinance. It's, noise ordinances are not, they, people are free to pursue one at town meeting. They usually do not fare well with voters. Because it can turn...
But they're free to do it.
Sure, folks can submit a petition through the state legal process for that, but it's, it's something that can be, it sounds easier until you try to actually implement it and your neighbors try to roll on at six-thirty.
One question, Madam Chair. If, if the building isn't built yet, is there a way to modify the building so that the outdoor dining is on the other side, instead of close to these folks?
The planning board's already approved.
Well, on the other, correct me if I'm wrong, that bay is actually an additional commercial space. Is that correct?
Can you repeat that?
On the...
Backside.
The western side pointing in towards the queasit development is an additional commercial space.
That's right. So I believe it's gonna be like a dentist's office or something like that. There's a tenant. I know Doug King has plans to put a buffer on that side where the patio is. I don't know the details of it, but I can ask him.
Yeah, the site plan contemplates additional vegetative buffer and things of that nature.
And the planning board is pretty reliable.
They, they try to balance, you know, the legitimate, understandable concerns of direct offenders, property lines shared, and the property rights of, of business owners as well. That's, that's tricky sometimes.
Craig, do you want to make a motion?
Madam Chair, may I? On the, on the hours, the one process that we were looking for, eleven to twelve on Thursday to Saturday, just to be clear. All other times will be the eleven one.
All right, so I, I think for the purposes of the vote tonight, because that wasn't clarified in the application, we would do eleven to eleven, which is what the state law is. And if you wanted to, you know, change that, you'd have to come back again. All right, Craig?
So I move to approve the liquor license for the property of three, move up several.
And common dictualers?
And common dictualers.
Second, Lamb.
Roger and Lamb, I will start with you, Jeff.
Stacy, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Paul Janetti, yes?
Bobby, yes.
All right, thank you, and good luck with the new restaurant.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hope to see you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. All right, next, we have a public hearing for National Grid in Verizon, New England, Plan 303-6820... All right, next, we have a public hearing for National Grid in Verizon, New England, Plan 303-68203 at 62 and 60 R, Paquanaquidda in Easton.
The Select Board of Easton is licensing authorities pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter 166, Section 22. We'll hold a public hearing involving Colleen A. Corona. Boardroom 136 Elm Street, Easton, Mass. on Monday, September 12, 2022, at 6:05 P.M. Consider an act on petition of Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid in Verizon, New England, to install a 1JO pole 26-84 on Paquanaquidd Avenue, beginning at a point approximately 300 feet south of the center line of the intersection of Beaver Dam Road and Paquanaquidd Avenue to support existing pole 26 on Paquanaquidd Avenue. In accordance with the petition for Plan Number 303-68203 dated July 25, 2022, as shown on file with the Select Board's Office.
You're from National Grid?
Yes.
If you consider standing, just in case.
Marcial Lovatone, National Grid Representative. Yes, that is correct. We are looking to install a pole. Basically, it's a stub pole, so we can support our existing pole across the street. It was previously anchored to a tree. It appears that that tree has finally died, it's been removed, from what I understand. So we want to, we need to support our pole across the street.
So that's not good.
Yeah.
All right, great. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, there was one, one question. Did it say underground instead of pole? I mean, one of the ones that
We actually have two.
Right.
Ones for underground Verizon.
That's the center street, not Paquanaquidd.
That is the one on Center Street. The Paquanaquidd one is a stub pole.
That's all, okay, all right.
Okay, if there's no questions, Craig, do you want to make a motion to approve the pole petition for National Grid Plan 303-68203 at 62 and 60 R, Paquanaquidda?
So moved, Bodger.
Second, Lamb.
Bodger and Lamb?
Stacy, yes.
Oh, actually, we don't need to do that.
Oh, okay, perfect.
It's hard to go back and forth from Zoom to this. All right, the next one, the pole petition for National Grid in Verizon, New England, Plan 306-14338 at 370 Center Street. Craig, do you want to read the notice?
Select Board of Easton is licensing authorities pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter 166, Section 22. Will hold a public hearing involving Colleen A. Corona. Boardroom 136 Elm Street, Easton, Mass. on Monday, September 12, 2022, 6:05 P.M. To consider an act on petition, Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid and Verizon, New England, to install 1JO pole 79-50 on Center Street, beginning at a point approximately 400 feet south of the center line of the intersection of Meeting House Lane to service 370 Center Street. In accordance with the petition for Plan Number 306-14338 dated August 25, 2025, as shown on file with the Select Board's Office.
That is correct. And that would be to service the residents at 370, and that would be underground cable service.
That's the new house that's on Center Street? I've seen them already, Doug.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, great. Anyone have any questions from the board? Okay, Craig, would you like to make a motion to approve the pole petition for Plan 306-14338 at 370 Center Street, Easton?
So moved, Bodger.
Second, Lamb.
Bodger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Great, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, on to licenses and permits. We have a private PMC fundraising event at 50 Oliver Street on Saturday, September 24, from 6:00 P.M. to 11:00 P.M.
Hi, Frank Elteri, 10 Balsam Lane, Northeastern. One of the proprietors of Shovel Town Brewery. That event is for one of our customers who's raising money for the Pan-Mass Challenge. As you know, it's a great fundraiser for cancer research and development. And they've chosen to have that event at our, at a part of our location. And so we're looking for the one-day liquor license to facilitate them having the ability to have wine in one area.
Okay, terrific. Any comments or questions from the board? All right, would you like to make a motion, Craig, to award the one-day liquor license for the private PMC fundraising event, 50 Oliver Street, September 24, 6:00 P.M. to 11:00 P.M.? An Eastern Police Detail is not required for this event.
So moved, Bodger.
Second, Lamb.
Bodger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Skip the next one and go to Frank's second one, Shovel Town Brewery, Oktoberfest.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You're eager. To benefit local charities on Saturday, October 15, 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 P.M.
So we're really excited about this one. This is our, really our capstone event every year. Our Oktoberfest is well-attended. It's a family-friendly event. We offer German food, we play some games, and it's really a good time. And we get a lot of feedback from our regular customers, as well as new customers, new people to the area who come and really enjoy themselves. So this one, we're really looking forward to it. And again, it's a great time, if you get a chance to come by, sample some great food. I think we've taken our food program, you know, kind of to the next level. So the food's been really good lately, as well as, of course, the fresh Oktoberfest and pumpkin beer that will be there.
So on the layout of that, if I can recall from last year, you block off so the cars can't go into
That's correct. We get permission from the YMCA to use their parking lot, and so we park cars in their upper lot. And then the back half of, which, we only lose a small amount of parking when we block off the parking lot in back. But yeah, no traffic goes through. We block off both ends of the parking lot. There's still egress, entrance and egress in the back of 50 Oliver. There's plenty of parking there. That's where the majority of the parking is. So the area that we close off, I could count the spaces, but I got to say, it's not, no more than 20. And I think there's 135 spaces in there. And then we gain those extra spaces with the YMCA. So we're back to, you know, we never had, never had a problem with parking. Nobody's parking on the streets or any of those things.
Unless you live in the neighborhood and you can walk.
That's, that's, that would be ideal.
Right, Mark?
That's right.
All right, well, that's great. And it mentions this is a fundraising event?
Yeah, so we, we're more than happy. We raised money for this, and we donated to a local charity. We've done a lot of work with the Easton Food Bank, as you know. And we actually encourage people to bring non-perishable food items to this. And usually I have a whole truckload that I have to take down at Kenwood. But we're not, we're not committed to the food bank this time, but it would definitely go to an Easton charity. And we've, we've done, you know, a lot of different ones.
Well, your support to the community has been very generous, and I know that we worked closely together with the Summer Concert Series.
Yeah.
I think we had a great night on the last night there, so.
That was, that's good. I'm glad that worked out for you.
And really, we really appreciate it because, you know, you've dedicated a lot of time and resources. And it was, it was really great for you to participate in that and the other local events. And also, just a comment on outside dining. Your place making is really beautiful when I walk by there and see, and the mural on the, on that big wall with the Shovel Town Brewery is really just beautiful. So it does give a sense of place. It isn't loud when I go by. You know, I walk my dog there quite often, and I have not, I can't hear anything from the streets. They did a really great job of that.
Thank you, thank you very much. We, yeah, we're glad that space worked out. It really fits well there, so, yeah, that's great. And we love being part of the community. I mean, that was part of our business plan to, you know, be community-centric. And it pays for itself, you know, they come, the community really accepts us, so we're, we're glad to be here.
So an Eastern Police Detail is not required for this event. So Craig, if you want to make a motion to award the one-day liquor license, I'm sorry, one-day beer and wine license for Saturday, October 15, 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 P.M.
So moved, Bodger.
Second, Lamb.
Bodger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Great, thank you.
I might just ask the board's permission just to plug another event, which was kind of related to something you had done earlier. On the 17th of September, we're doing an event, which is for local veterans and veteran support at Smith Farm in Borderland, at Borderland, which we also got a one-day liquor license for. So I'd encourage people to come out, support that event, if you could. And we'll be serving pizza there, as well as beer, and should be a good time, so.
Thanks for letting me have forgotten about that one. But if you have that on your social media?
We do.
I'll share it on my social media.
What are the hours for that event?
I think it's, I was just looking at it. It's during the day, it's 12:00 to 5:00, I believe.
12:00 to 5:00, awesome.
Yeah.
All right, terrific. Well, hoping for good weather for all of these events.
Yeah, exactly. Two to five, I'm sorry, two to five.
Two to five, fantastic.
Thank you, Frank.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and the one in the middle that we missed, Stonehill College Football Game, W.B. Mason Stadium at the Blessed Basil Moreau Drive, Saturday, October 1, from 12:00 P.M. to 4:00 P.M. Stonehill College has applied for a one-day beer and wine license for a football game to be held at W.B. Mason Stadium. Again, Saturday, October 1, 12:00 P.M. to 4:00 P.M. An Eastern Police Detail is not required for this event. Would you like to make a motion, Craig?
Move to approve the one-day beer and wine license for Saturday, October 1, 2022, 12:00 to 4:00 at W.B. Mason Stadium, grounds of Stonehill College.
Second.
Bodger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Great, thank you very much. All right, now we go on to action and discussions. A contract award for a fiber optic cable installation, Phoenix Communications, DPW 2023-11.
Sure, so thank you, Dottie. In the board's packet, you'll find a memo from DPW Director Dave Field for the contract described. This is for running a fiber network to connect our ongoing construction of new water treatment wells for Kifos and Iron Magnets at various locations in town to the town's existing fiber internal network for SCADA monitoring and things of that nature. Good news is that a large chunk of this is being funded through a state competitive grant process. And we won this year 129,000 out of 183 through a community contract municipal fiber grant.
Great, you said that, Craig?
Exactly what we want it designed for, so we're pleased.
Any questions?
Is this underground or is it over the line, the telephone line?
I believe it's on the post.
Yeah, at those prices, I would think aerial. Be much more for the underground.
Unfortunately, unfortunately.
But that's really important because we need, you know, those wells need to be online, you know, without interruption, so. Any questions, comments? All right, Craig, would you like to make a motion to award the contract, DPW 2023-11 to fiber optic cable installation, of fiber optic cable installation to Phoenix Communications?
So moved, Bodger.
Second, Lamb.
Bodger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Okay, discussion and vote on a contract extension, cold water meters, Stiles Company Incorporated, Contract Number WAT 2022-01.
Sure, so the board's packet is a one-year extension of the existing supply contract that we have with Stiles Meter for cold water meters. This was originally awarded last year, and at that time, in the invitation for the associated contract award, there were options for two additional one-year terms to be voted by the town. Dave Field is recommending exercising one of those extensions at this point through June of next year.
Okay, any comments or questions?
Just a clarification, so these cold water meters, if I recall correctly, it's just the meters in the house that they are moving or replacing?
Yeah, the ongoing meter replacement program.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Craig, do you want to make a motion to award the contract, WAT 2022-01, for cold water meters, to Stiles Company Incorporated?
So moved, Bodger.
Second, Lamb.
Bodger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. All right, next is, Michael Blanchard is going to talk to us about the Massachusetts opioid litigation attorneys, otherwise known as MOLA litigation.
Thank you, Dottie. I just have a couple slides, I thought I might make it a little bit easier for the board and the public. As this law, what may recall, in April of 2018, you voted to join the Mass. litigation, working with MOLA, which was a consortium of local national law firms. The Massachusetts Attorney General's Office also joined in on this, as well as every other state. The litigation aimed at recovering monetary damage from the pharmaceutical manufacturers and distributors for their role in the devastating opioid epidemic. Nationwide, the distributors will pay a maximum of $21 billion over 18 years, while Johnson &amp; Johnson, the manufacturer, will pay a maximum of $5 billion over no more than nine years, with approximately $22.8 billion in settlement proceeds available to state and local subdivisions. Massachusetts, the settlement will provide up to $537 million in abatement funds to cities and towns over 18 years to fund additional prevention, harm reduction, treatment, and recovery across Massachusetts. Forty percent of the funding will go directly to municipalities. Sixty percent go to a state opioid recovery and remediation fund, which will be used statewide by a special counsel that was appointed by the governor to make determinations on where that money goes. The funds are required to be used for opioid prevention, harm reduction, treatment, and recovery. And it will require some annual reporting requirements by the communities that receive annual payments in more than $35,000, which you will see in a second, that Easton is included in that. So that's a little small, sorry. But just the, the gist of it is, this year, this summer and fall, very soon, part of this payment, Easton's going to receive $251,000 from this settlement. Then you'll, you'll see there's a breakdown over the, over 12, 18 years. But at the end of that, Easton will be receiving just shy of $1.2 million from this settlement.
So the 251 is one year?
251 is a year one. The reason it's so high is the Johnson &amp; Johnson settlement, we're getting five years of payments all at once. And so it's a little bigger that first year. And then each year it ranges from a low of 43 to a high of 72, 74?
The total was 1.2?
1.2 million over, over those 18 years. So our final payment will be in 2038.
I'm probably not going to be able to.
So this is just some of the abatement strategies, so that the money can be used for a variety of things, including workforce costs, so staffing related to accomplishing these goals. It can be used for a number of programs. The state is encouraging communities to look to partner with other communities or other groups that are already existing, such as we have the Easton Links Coop Group, and so partnering with other existing services that are already out there. And then lastly, again, the annual reporting piece, and that's something that we'll work on internally. The first report will be on FY '23 spending. Wendy happens to be in the room, we're going to be working on perhaps an article for special town meeting. There is a little bit of where is?
Concentration.
Sure, thank you. In that, there was a bill before the state legislature that the opioid settlement funds, settlement funds could be put in separate accounts, almost like a special purpose account for towns to use. Unfortunately, that bill is kind of in the other economic development pieces, and the whole thing got put off. So right now, the money that we receive actually needs to go into the general fund, just like other sources of revenue that we receive. So we're looking at some options, the accountants and finance directors are looking at creating special funds that we could use to kind of put that in a stabilization fund to make sure that it gets used for the proper purpose. Because even though in theory, the general funds could lose that, it would be against the agreement. So you do need to make sure it's used for the proper purpose.
But that money is appropriated by town meeting, so if they could say, strip that out, we don't want that, and then what do you do?
Right, right. So we're, we're going to
We were trying to avoid a situation where the whole legislature could allocate funds in violation of the settlement.
Right.
They would, but it's much clearer to have receipts reserved.
And we do hope the legislation may still vote and get this corrected on there.
And you also want to measure the success of that, too, so it's easy to do if you've got that on one slide.
That's right.
Okay.
And that's all I had, if there were any questions, we have to answer them, but otherwise, you know, it's a terrible epidemic, but it's nice to see some of this money turned back and hopefully we can put it somewhere of good use in our community.
How do they determine the distribution to you?
So it was a percentage formula based on population and also incidence of opioid overdoses and things like that.
And then we will highlight your own work. Could you just give the board a little background? So Mike's been working at this for four and a half years, basically started two months after you were in this role. And so to Craig's question, I mean, you've been working with the MOLA attorneys to provide data, working with police, fire, health, aggregating this information over many, many years to them so that they could calculate that information and making sure we have the best information going out the door to get the best
going out the door to get the best settlement.
That's right, yes. Yeah, we provided with a lot of data. And again, the more we provided, we thought, the better, the better the return are for us. So it worked out pretty well, I think.
Any comments or questions?
I just thank you, Michael, for your hard work on this. It's really, it's great to have additional resources to address this, this tremendous problem.
Absolutely, thanks.
I think that Easton has been doing a good job with some of the youth substance issues over the years, with getting grants and so forth to create awareness. There was some setbacks during COVID, as you can imagine, and you can notice that in the numbers with the surveys. When students have the health survey, that, all that data is used to be able to get more grants and grant funding, and nowhere to focus the attention here. So it's, it's very helpful, and they're in their sixth year now, so, and still very strong. Excellent. So do we need to vote on this?
No, just an update, so you know it's coming.
Thank you, Mike. No standing.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you, Michael. You've been working on this diligently and, you know, following it and making sure. We were one of the first adopters, so making sure that we still had a seat right up front while this was happening and advocating for us to get that money, so. Great job. It's a nice one that finally comes to fruition. All right, next is the town administrator update for municipal facilities replacement, police, fire, DPW, and feasibility planning.
Sure, thank you, Dottie. Just one moment while I share my. So following the last presentation, the board received a 22nd relating to police, fire, and Public Works facilities replacement. I wanted to keep it on the board's agenda as a standing and recurring item. As the Municipal Building Committee moves from its current final stages of feasibility study into schematic design with a preferred alternative selected this October, the standing items are not intended to replace a comprehensive presentation with a large team, akin to what we did at the last meeting, but just to keep the item in public consciousness and on the board's agenda, so I can provide periodic status updates and answer questions that you may have heard since the last meeting. So since the last meeting, we've actually seen a tremendous amount of progress despite Labor Day. This is just a reminder of where we are in this process, where it was kind of intense push in September leading into October with a lot of public meetings planned and neighborhood events. And the design and engineering team is hard at work as well. One of the most substantive pieces that's coming together is the fire station study, preliminary response study graphics have been shared with the Municipal Building Committee. Each of the three models that the NBC has advanced are considered viable for response times. This is where the current stations are located, as we know. This is basically a heat map of five-minute response times under the existing station model. Our three stations, assuming that there are staff at all three of these facilities. As we know, under the current staffing model, we have usually two firefighters at Station 2 and two firefighters at Station 3. There's going to be obviously a lot of discussion and worthy discussion around the kind of policy and operational decision for the town moving forward on making a change from a three to a two-station model. And I think one of the things that's really important to do is to keep kind of coming back to the data and looking at our response models and understanding that while in a vacuum, if you have perfect staff levels, having four to six firefighters at multiple stations throughout a community could be great. But the reality is, even at the level of staff right now with the fire department, which is the highest it's been, we do not have the staff power to have typically more than two folks in Station 2 and 3. And so this is what the response time looks like under our current model, anytime an ambulance or fire truck is out of Station 3. So anything that's not in the purple is outside of five-minute response. But as you can tell, it's a huge portion of the southwestern sections of Easton, which during previous studies in the late 90s and then a citizen-led committee-led effort in 2011, a lot of the density, both commercial and particularly residential, was not so much in this corridor. But with Target, Avalon, the restaurants, shopping, the assisted living facilities in particular, which is the number one driver of calls, that center of gravity has shifted pretty heavily. And so this is, at any time where a piece of apparatus has already been dispatched from Station 3 on Bay Road, we'd be relying mutually for this. This is a five-minute response under one of the options we've seen that's being proposed, which is maintaining Station 3, a new fire substation, a police fire, sorry, at Main and Washington, and a DPW on Gil. So another option selected by Municipal Building Committee. This is maintaining Station 3 on Bay Road, plus just fire at Daly Corner with police and public works on the Depot Street property. And then this is another alternative that is currently being looked at by Municipal Building Committee, which is police, fire, and public works at the Depot Street property, Gil property, near Whistle Stop, along the Daly Corner, contemplated. So you can see a variety of statistics on the table here showing that there's a general level of comparability with the existing level of service of three-station and an improved level compared to the current model when there's a vehicle dispatched in Station 3. We should probably add all of this to say that I'm certainly not personally a PhD in this, which is why we invited that person to give a presentation and go super into weeds to Municipal Building Committee. We're working on scheduling that now. Or at some point in September, where that's basically going to be the only thing on the agenda, to just really give folks who, you know, are interested in this and concerned and want to understand what data's driving, these are really important decisions, to have a kind of dedicated meeting where that can be presented. A consultant is available with fire leadership to answer questions from Municipal Building Committee, anyone else who's curious or interested. And, and to kind of demonstrate that we understand that this could be a big change and that we want to make sure we're being thoughtful and doing it the right way. Not unlike going to a regional dispatch is a big change and, you know, can come with a lot of concern and in fear of the, of the unknown, and that we try to make sure that we are always guided by the data there, the amount of experts, folks who have done these things in other communities, and, and looking at what is unique about our layout and finding a way to make it work. And Semrec has obviously, you know, has a couple of growing bases. Any change with it has been extremely, extremely successful and beneficial. So that's ongoing.
I'm sorry, when is that presentation?
We're working on scheduling it. Now we're going to add it to the existing kind of September push. So probably, I mean, we're already going to be in September in three days, so it's second half of September, so I'm saying.
Yeah, so there are people who have asked me questions, and I would like to point them to that meeting, so take it in.
And as with everything we're doing with this, we'll make sure that we have these reports and things online. We'll get the video of the presentation online as well, so that as we move, you know, projects like this, like the school, they have kind of levels of interest waxed and waned. I think right now, we're going to be in a bit of a push between now and October, getting to picking a preferred alternative, getting into schematic. We're going to continue meeting publicly and doing the work, but there may be another real, I expect another real big engagement push in spring and summer as it gets closer to the actual decision time for the community, and we'll be able to have that presentation from September available the entire time. And unless something dramatic changes about the plan during schematic, then it will still be valuable and reasonable. So we'll make sure we share it out with the board and the public as part of our ongoing messaging. Jamie's on the ABC, so I'm always looking at him to make sure I'm getting every single thing I've related correctly.
So what are your thoughts, Jamie? You've been on this since the beginning?
Yes, and part of the reason I'm looking at Connor is a lot of information was covered in our last meeting and very thoughtfully, with a lot of great questions about starting response time and how we can inform the community of what's going on. And Connor put it correctly, it's not just the professionals that'll be in the room, but it's Chief Alexander explaining what it's like when you now are down, an ambulance has responded and left Station 3, and now you've got two firefighters who essentially can't do anything, and how long it is. It's on average, I think, two hours before that station is back online, say that ambulance has left and gone. And maybe they've had to make, you know, transport. So it's a significant amount of time that we spend probably daily without the ability to dispatch anything from Station 3. So that combination, because I don't think the numbers explain it all, and that's what Connor's leaning to. You really need a combination of, you know, the professionals who do the studies along with professionals on the ground. It's, there's been a lot of incredible conversation going on, and I couldn't be happier with the folks that are on the committee, too, that are asking all the great questions.
I think that's a really great point, because that's how people can understand it. But just to clarify, if people are listening at home, when they, when you say that, that the Bay Road station might be offline for two hours, that doesn't mean it's going to take them two hours to get to your house. It means that we have mutual aid filling in from surrounding communities when that happens. But, you know, with Semrec now measuring response times and the number of calls and the volume, I mean, we have the technology more than ever before to really fine-tune these kinds of questions and then use anecdotal, real-life experience from the, the people that actually do the work. And I think we're really well positioned to get some great information here.
So just a couple other updates since last meeting. Cost estimation is ongoing. This is not really the stage of the project where we have sharp enough pencils to do tax impact analysis of things that I think most people kind of, I think, really care about. That comes later after we're in the schematic process with a specific project. But as is no surprise to the board, you know, even the conceptual estimates we're seeing are substantial given the scale of what this project is trying to accomplish. We, talking as Municipal Building Committee immediately said, well, we really should do the work to contextualize this, much like we did with the Blanche James Project, when we start seeing large, you know, multi-figure figures. What does that actually mean compared to? What would it cost to do a repair in addition to the existing property we own to bring it up to where it ought to be from a code perspective and an operations perspective? Because it's obviously a very legitimate kind of counterpoint, but members of the public are going to want and deserve to know. And so we're working on that right now. We should actually have that for Wednesday night. We're going to the Finance Committee to do a, hopefully abbreviated version of the hour and a half presentation we gave you on the 22nd. And we'll have some of those kind of comparative figures, again, not for folks to take to the bank for a year from now, but just for an order of magnitude, kind of contextual sensibility of, well, this seems like a big and tough project, can we just not do it? And, and just fix what we have and to show what those things look like in a comparative way. So we're working on that. It's also an important caveat that all of that we're doing kind of as an academic exercise, that has to be land agnostic, because bringing these buildings up to code and adding the size that they need on site is actually not possible. For DPW on Center Street, for police, fire, whatever, it's, it's not doable, because these are all quite constrained lots. And, and the video tour of DPW that's online now, he walks through the 18 accessory structures and lean tubes that they have on site that they're bursting out of. So nonetheless, we still think getting those numbers from a square footage perspective is important. Land reuse. So some exciting updates on land planning relating to Center School and Merle Hall that are related to ongoing facilities planning. As we've noted throughout the feasibility study, Daly's Corner at Washington Bay has kind of repeatedly been identified as a key potential site for a fire station. And so recognizing this, we've executed a memorandum of understanding of Stonehill College, acknowledging this planning and the shared interest we have in advancing our due diligence, working cooperatively on that, having permission to go on-site, geotapping, those kinds of things. At the same time, acknowledging the college's interest in Merle Hall once that is no longer being used as a public school come January. The MOU is a statement of interest. It's not a binding real estate transaction. It doesn't supersede necessary approvals of town meeting for or for government processes, but we felt it was a good thing to get on paper because of a very reasonable question NBC has had and folks engaging with us, you know, putting your eggs in a design, a schematic design basket, assuming the potential ability to put a fire station on land, you don't know, without some kind of letter of intent. So we've done that. Similarly, as part of this process throughout 2020, one of the sites that was being reviewed by Municipal Building Committee and the designers and engineers was Center School, which will no longer be used as a school come January. And that site was ruled out by the Municipal Building Committee as a viable land location for DPW, police, and fire, given that the Depot Street parcel down in Rome is larger, has sewer access where Center School doesn't, and is more closely located to those major commercial and residential clusters in five corners. So given that it's not in the running for any of the three options for municipal reuse from a Municipal Building Committee standpoint, we've got some school committee who have done so to vote to transfer care and custody of both this property and Moreau to the select board effective only once they're no longer being used as schools. And we've executed a MOU of a YMCA, acknowledging their interest in the Center School property for a potential new build in Easton YMCA. Again, they're statements of interest. They don't supersede any necessary approvals or procurements. But particularly in the case of Stonehill and Daly's Corner, where the property has been identified as, you know, a key site of public safety interest, we felt that getting this due diligence done and memorialized now was appropriate. So that has taken place. And then finally, on public information and engagement, we've been updating our website throughout with videos of presentations we're giving. And again, stealing from the schools, video tours are starting to go live now. We have one of DPW with ECAT and all Vogler, and I believe we'll have videos of police and fire online this week as well. We will be visiting Finance Committee this week at 7:00 PM at a public meeting. We invited every chair of every board committee in Easton to tune in if they would like. We invited the Citizens Academy. We'll be going to community events like NRT and Borderland. And we'll be working on one-page flyer QR codes that hand out to folks at those events, so that anyone who feels interested in schematic design and 50-year building planning can get their fix for the next six weeks. So that's, that's what we've done since last meeting. Happy to take any questions, folks.
Comments, questions?
It's very exciting to hear this.
Jamie?
I'm just excited, too, because, yes, there's the big financial piece of this, and you're going to hear us talk like we did with SBC, there's cost avoidance piece of this, right? There's, you know, not to mention, and we've talked about this numerous times, we are not a community of 10,000 people anymore, and we are asking our department heads to operate safely out of buildings that are long, you know, outgrown there, there, you know, what we need them for. So there's, I think it's going to be excellent. Once we get in front of the community and do the same thing, where we really work to market this and advertise it, understand, get everyone on board understanding the benefits of the community long term. Thank you.
No problems, thank you.
All right, I just think that one of the things you're talking about is making sure that people really understand that these sites are not acceptable going forward. You can't make them fit our needs.
Right, this is not, you know, the town wouldn't be considering projects of the scale and complexity absent need, right? It's, it's time, I think. We're trying to think that the newest, the newest building is nearing four years old in town, and then the next newest are Cold War era. And they just simply are past their time.
Aside from that, every year that you wait, the costs go up, you know, amazingly. So the time is now, really.
Particularly right now.
We can't wait, and, you know, these buildings are going to last, again, the same premise, really following the ideas with the Blanche and school. You know, every year you wait, it's going to take longer, it's harder to, to get it done, and those schools need to last another 50 years, so.
Yeah, you run on a risk of, you know, catastrophic infrastructure, these buildings, boilers, things that are essential for them to be functional going, and you need significant capital costs for repair and replacement for a facility that's not going to continue to be used.
So back to the Blanche and school. That's three months.
Yeah.
Oh, the building's actually like six weeks, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, it should be, yeah, I'll track the six to.
Yeah, it should be, yeah, I'll track the six to its completion.
Yeah.
It just really feels like that went by fast. I mean, maybe it didn't to the people that are stressing with the little details of it every single day, but it, I just, it's, I can't believe it's, it's almost here. I'm so excited for the families and the teachers and all those little kids that get to go in. We had a tour several weeks back, the school planning committee, and it's just incredible. Every little detail was just thought, you know, heights and colors and textures and really going to be an amazing, amazing building.
My daughter went from being completely opposed to leaving Monroe Hall to doing a total one eighty because her first ability, she's like, okay, I still love Monroe Hall, but this is pretty awesome. Fan approved.
I think one of the things that's significant is that I've talked to a number of people who have just moved into town. And one of the driving forces to come to Easton was the square.
Undoubtedly.
Well, people want, people, your property values go up whether you use the school or not because people know that you're a community that invests in its infrastructure. And that's really important because your home values are going to, are going to remain strong.
I already feel kind of that sense of continuity too that comes from the school complex. Like you can feel it. I can't put my finger on it, but it's, it's exciting to see it coming to that direction. So.
All right. So our last item on the agenda almost is Finance Director and Audit Committee Presentation for the Fiscal Year 2021 Audit. So we have Finance Director Wendy Knightengale and Audit Committee Member Jennifer Stark, and they're going to present the audit to the board. So we'll ask you to come up to the microphones. Thanks for being here with us tonight. It's been a long time since we've, we've been in this room together.
Yes. Okay. Can you hear both of us if we have the mic in the middle or?
That doesn't deamplify. That's for the cable channel. So we can hear you guys.
Should be fine for cable as well.
Should be fine for cable. Okay. All right. Great. Well, thank you, everybody, for having us here tonight. We are pleased to present the Fiscal Year 2021 Audited Financial Report for the Town of Easton. So beginning with the overall audit results, as in past years, our auditors Malanson have given the town an unqualified or clean opinion on the audit, finding our books and records to be complete and in good note, good order with no material findings. The management letter included, reflects the town accountants' continued diligence in closing out past year items, leaving only two minor recommendations and an informational comment on preparing for a change in accounting standards for the treatment of leases called GASB Statement eighty-seven that will be effective for Fiscal Year 2022. In our discussion at our meeting and in the draft response to the letter, Wendy Knightengale agreed with the recommendations and provided updates to the committee on changes that have been made or preparations that are underway to address those recommendations. Our principal from Malanson, who presented this year and worked with Wendy on the audit, was Ed Boyd for a second year. And that was because we had requested a new audit leader a couple of years ago as best practice for getting a fresh set of eyes on a periodic basis. So this was his second year through. We have a good long-term relationship with our audit firm, Malanson. We did vote to extend their contract for one year for the Fiscal Year 2022 audit, but have requested a fee benchmarking study before we commit to a multi-year contract to continue to ensure that the services and fees are in line with, with what we would get from any other firms. So as previewed at last December's update, which Len provided to this board, the 2020, 2021 financials were quite solid. Great news was that the unassigned balance, which reflects the stabilization, the stabilization and free cash increased by, was it four million?
Yes.
Okay. And is up to, to go up to ten point five million, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And is now, was thirteen and a half percent of the operating budget for Fiscal 2021, which is, I, I think, a target that would have been unimaginable just a few years ago. So as discussed in the Fiscal Year 2022 budgeting process last spring, there were many factors that contributed to this, including uncollected receivables from 2020 that rebounded in 2021, strong collections in areas like taxes and local receipts, like motor vehicle excise, and probably most significantly, significant budgetary turnbacks due to COVID-related reductions in services and the use of COVID-related relief funds. Our bond rating continues to be double A three, which is considered high quality and a low credit risk. There are two ratings above double A three. And so to satisfy our curiosity, Wendy did provide to the audit committee some Moody's comparisons showing where Easton falls in relation to national and state benchmarks on some key metrics for those higher rated communities. During his review of the financials, Mr. Boyd called out some specific areas where Easton is very favorable in terms of ratings. One, the unassigned balance, which was that thirteen and a half percent, was over the town's ten percent goal as at the end of Fiscal Year 2021. And that's well within a benchmark for triple A rated communities of ten to sixteen percent. Now that we've gotten here, the question would be whether or not that can be maintained going forward, which is a, you know, a big question and something we'll find out over the coming years. The, the triple A benchmark for the percent of debt to be paid back in ten years is seventy-five percent of debt. Eighty-six percent of Easton's general fund debt is scheduled to be paid back in ten years, so exceeding that benchmark. Sixty-eight percent of business activity debt, such as water and sewer, will be paid back within ten years. So a little bit below that benchmark, but that's significantly up from fifty-two percent in Fiscal Year 2019. And that's second, the business activity debt reflects the long-term nature of infrastructure projects, and that is understood by ratings agencies. So it's not something that comes against us. So as with past years, a significant portion of our meeting with Mr. Boyd focused on our largest long-term liabilities, pension and OPEB. So first, an update on the pension, which is a little more straightforward. The pension is managed by Bristol County Retirement System. Our liability from Fiscal Year 2020 to 2021 was reduced from fifty-three million to forty-eight million. And the funded status of the plan increased from sixty-one percent to sixty-five percent funded. We do want to note that this measurement was taken as of twelve thirty-one twenty twenty for Fiscal Year 2021. And a lot has happened in the market since then with interest rates and market volatility. Both of those will affect the liability and funded status calculation. So we would expect to see changes in those over time and particularly from that last measurement to twenty twenty-two. The town's required contribution for Fiscal Year 2021 was four point eight million to the pension. And the new funding schedule does extend to twenty thirty-five. So I know that was discussed back in December, that it was looking like twenty thirty-five, and that is in effect. So we can expect to continue to have a sizable annual, annual contribution of multimillion dollars every year until at least then. Any questions on the pension before I move on to everybody's favorite topic?
So, so that's basically consistent with other communities as well. There's, there's not, not too many of them that are funded at a hundred percent right now.
Right. And especially where we're part of the Bristol County Retirement System. They set the funding policy. They set the asset allocation policy. They dictate to the member communities how much they have to pay. So everybody's at the same, in the same boat who's in the Bristol County Retirement System.
Easton makes up about eleven percent of that retirement system. And also, I just wanted to also mention too that, you know, this, this valuation was as of twenty twenty-one. In twenty twenty-two, the latest actuarial valuation put the pension system up to like seventy-one percent funded. So it went from sixty-five to seventy-one. Now, of course, with all of the changes in the market, that, that may need to be adjusted. But at least as of the last valuation, it has shown an increase.
Yeah. Great.
Okay. So OPEB, just as, I know you all know this, but as a reminder to anybody watching at home, OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. In, in Easton's cases, we're basically talking about retiree medical. So Fiscal Year 2021, our OPEB net liability was one hundred seventy-nine million dollars. That is a very large number. And as of Fiscal Year 2021, our balance in the OPEB trust was two hundred seventeen thousand dollars. So we are zero point one two percent funded against this liability. So admittedly, those numbers sound alarming, but I'll reiterate what we've discussed in the past, which is that we are on par with most other communities regarding OPEB funding. And I believe Municipal Janetti has relayed in the past that this continues to be a hot topic with Mass Municipal Association. So the change in liability from Fiscal Year 2020, the Fiscal Year 2020 liability was one hundred sixty-four million. So it only went up fifteen million. And I say that because prior to twenty twenty, our liability range had been around one hundred twenty million. So there was a forty-five million dollar change from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty due to updates in mortality tables. So, and those, how, those are done not frequently, the mortality table updates.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah. So we won't expect to see tens of millions of dollars in liability changes on a frequent basis. That would be something that happens every few years maybe at most. Okay. So as you all know, the town pays its share of retiree medical premiums as they are due, and that was around three point seven million for Fiscal Year 2021. So that is an ongoing expense coming out of the operating budget. So we've had this discussion before. The number's always huge. What we're able to put into the trust fund is, is small. So we wanted to move the conversation forward a little bit with our auditor. And we had some interesting discussion that I thought we'd bring to you for just consideration. So one of, the, the liability is that there's, there are a few key drivers of the liability, but one of them is the rate of return that's assumed you'll get on your investments. And because we're funding so little, we, the, the assumption uses the long-term twenty-year municipal bond rate index, which is around two and a quarter percent. It was two point two five percent for Fiscal Year 2021. That was two point five percent the year before. So just to note, that rate changes over time. Interest rates have been increasing. So the Fiscal Year 2022 rate will be higher than that. Do you know what it was? Four something?
The bond rate that was, have you gotten to that?
Oh, then the, the coupon.
The municipal bond rate? Yeah.
The, I mean, the coupon rates.
The discount rate. Yeah.
Yeah. The coupon rates on some of them are, you know, be four and five percent for the coupon rates. But actually, I did speak with the, email the actuary and today, and he did indicate that he felt that because bonds, that the index for bonds has been going up, that that could have either a positive or a less negative effect on the new valuation when we do the update for Fiscal twenty-two.
So the context for this is when we look at the pension, so the pension has the same, similar projection where you have a couple of key levers and one of them is, is a discount rate. So in the pension, because the pension is substantially funded, you're able to use the actual rate of return for the investments that are, that are offsetting that liability, which is typically around seven percent. So that high seven percent rate helps reduce the liability. So our question was how high the OPEB balance would have to be in our OPEB trust fund before we could get a little bit higher than that municipal bond rate, before we could start reflecting some of that investment. Now, obviously, zero point one two percent is not that number. But we thought it would be a good question to get, at least to get some idea, how far are we, how far away are we from having any ability to impact that discount rate? So Wendy had confirmed that we, there's a biannual process for doing an actuarial assumption on the OPEB. The Fiscal Year 2022 is one of those years. So that is something that we will be asking the actuary to do, is to put together some scenarios that can be shared. And who knows, maybe there'll be some information that's interesting and potentially actionable in the long term, at least in terms of overall planning. Let's see. Okay. So I think overall, and you know, we've talked about long term and unfortunately, that pension funding has been pushed out. I think a few years ago, we were thinking twenty twenty-eight, now it's twenty thirty-five, and that when we're no longer having to make that substantial contribution to pension every year, that some of that could perhaps be used to offset the OPEB liability. And our understanding from our auditor is that that's a common line of thinking and a common plan among other, other municipalities. So any questions on OPEB before we move on to a couple of other items?
So if I could just add, first of all, thank you all for a level of attention on the audit. It's, it's very important. People can't get these numbers. I think it's not to downplay the shared kind of liability concern, but can we just talk a little bit about what the difference between actuarial liability assessment is versus what your annual obligations are?
Yep.
For example.
Yeah, absolutely. So as mentioned, so right now, we're able to keep up with the town's portion of the premium payments, which are around three point seven, four million dollars a year.
For retirees.
For, yes, for retiree medical, for OPEB. So that projection out there is the long-term cost of providing retiree medical in perpetuity for everybody who's employed by the Town of Easton and is eligible for the retiree medical plan. It's a much larger number than, you know, we have employees who don't use our medical. You know, it doesn't account for turnover. It doesn't account for new hires. There's a lot that goes into those projections, but it is just, it is a very, very, very long-term projection. Do you want to, else do you want to add?
Yeah. There's, there's a lot of assumptions built into that. I mean, there are assumptions in terms of what percentage are healthcare costs going to go up every year? You know, how long are people going to live after they retire? What your discount percentage is? They do, and, and there is a sensitivity analysis that they do, you know, showing like what happens if healthcare costs go up one percent or they go down? Or the same thing also for like your discount rate. I mean, if your discount rate go, just moves up one percent in that, in the analysis, I think it shaves like twenty-nine million off of the liability. So.
So these small movements translate into tens of millions of dollars in swings. So, so the numbers are big and alarming, but it's, it doesn't reflect our ability to meet obligations.
And it's not a liability that's going to come due, you know, tomorrow or five years. This is, this is something that is going to grow, you know, slowly but surely over time. And so if we're, if we're only just paying what we have to pay now, we're not putting additional money away for employees that are earning that retirement benefit now while they're working, then that's where you get into this, you know, unfunded liability.
Is there a point closer to the time where that ability to meet the annual starts to get dicey? When, when is that projected to happen?
That's a great question. Any thoughts on that?
What, could you answer?
So what, the, right now, we're able to annually fund what comes forth in terms of retirement medical costs. Is there a point?
Three point seven four.
Yeah, the four-ish million, let's say.
Right.
If that number continues to grow based on some assumptions, to what point do we find ourselves in a dicey situation continuing to fund that annually?
Well, I think it depends. You're every, there is rarely ever a year for us in Easton where balancing the budget is.
Oh, yeah.
But one of the things that, there's two main drivers there, right? There is the structural revenue deficit largely attributable to kind of chronic sub-inflation rates of increase to state aid in the form of Chapter Seventy and unrestricted aid. That puts us in a position where our revenue, total revenue growth is, you know, two and a half to three percent, maybe three and a half in a good year. A lot of that driven by property tax and local permits and fees. And so when you have a fixed cost and a fixed obligation like this in an area that in many years grows in excess of three percent, you're always, not always, but most years, you're losing ground.
Yeah.
So it, it, I don't think there would necessarily be one calamitous year because we've been setting aside a lot of funds into our reserves and, and trying to be really judicious with our operating budgets to not overextend ourselves. But the truth is that these, these represent a significant challenge to our ability to deliver service every year.
Yeah. Better way for me to would have asked the question would have been the percent increase of that line year-over-year compared to our annual? It sounds like two and a half, three-ish, so it's somewhat.
So, so we've been fortunate since joining the GIC. So we've taken a lot, we've taken a lot of effort in the past decade to try to mitigate the cost of health insurance for the municipal and school budget, but also for the employees by shifting into the GIC. And thankfully, the aggregate rate increase in the GIC has been significantly better. It's not zero, but there's been a few years where our aggregate budget increases a couple of percent for healthcare, which is pretty good. Then there are some years, I think more recently, we're seeing closer to five percent some years. Then there are some years, I think more recently, we're seeing closer to 5% some years. And as you all know from being on Finance Committee Select Board, we effectively never see a 5% increase to a school or town budget for the actual service and operations because of the revenue shortfall from the state on one side and the fixed cost growth on the other largely in this arena. So we've been able to mitigate the pressure that exerts on the operating budget to an extent, but it still poses a significant one. And depending on the year, you know, if you have a year where free cash is not prior year free cash certification isn't dramatically flush, and you have a 7% or 8% increase in the health premium, you can have a really rough year. You you may be able to mitigate it for a year or two at a time with reserve funds and things of that nature, but that's just delaying it.
I think it's helpful because it gives it is another piece of bringing the understanding from that big giant scary number down to how we're actually dealing with this year to year and being very, you know, proactive with thinking about how these pieces, you know, consider how they relate to that big number.
Right. And another good use way to kind of think about it is that retiree premium share is more than the annual operating budget of the entire town hall.
Yeah.
Some things I would like to point out, you know, I'm on the Audit Committee with Jen. We had our meeting last week, you know, right now, we're 217,000 in that 100 and median liability. And the path that we're on, we do $25,000 per year towards that, which represents 0.12%. And, you know, the concern for us in that meeting was in order for us to get to that next to a next level where we can save, you know, $30 million, we didn't know that target. So we discussed, we talked about how we need to have that target before we can make decisions. Because right now, we're, I can't even say we're on a we're on a path for something because we're not really on a path for anything, which also opens up a larger question. And that is regardless of what comes back, I have a really good feeling that they're going to say you're going to need to make six bigger contributions annually in order to to achieve that, which is understandable. So then the questions that we were having were, okay, so in order for that to occur, to make six figure contributions annually to reduce, you know, by $30 million, because those small movements save millions on the other end, what are our options? And there were options, whether you like it or not, the options were this retirement community of people, you could you could change what they pay in premiums, which to me and to all of us, I think at the time, even now, that also poses an ethical moral dilemma. You know, how can you do that? But you the Select Board can do that. So so what are the other options? And what else is being done where a contribution would have the magnitude to 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 hit that six figure annual amount? And I know Connor, you you have some thoughts on that, what what can be done?
So there's kind of a few different approaches folks are taking. And Jen and Wendy touched on a really common one outside, except for the kind of wealthiest communities with very large kind of commercial tax bases or unique situations like stadium revenue. Really, the plan is to make nominal contributions of a direction of your bond rating agency while keeping an eye on the actuarial timeline for your pension liability. And as has been noted tonight, that realistically, with market volatility and things like that, that's that's not holding revenue constraints aside, in my opinion, really, that's it's not a viable plan that any of us are going to see through to fruition. There are some communities who have kind of a very different revenue situation where they have a new unique thing come online, like a stadium, and they say, hey, you know what? That's it's a whole, whole lot of new revenue. We're going to take some for operations and we're going to plow a big chunk of it into these liabilities. That's obviously not our circumstance. And then you really have things more on the margins where you can adopt policies that rank the priority, which we've done. OPEB is contemplated in our fund balance policy, but it kind of speaks to this waterfall approach of meeting your obligations for today first. You know, your debts and liabilities that are due this year, your operations for this year. Then have if you have free cash, your capital needs. And then if you've met that and your reserve goals, then OPEB, which as we all know, is we we're not ever in a situation where we say, oh gee, we have too much revenue to allocate, what do we do this year? So when the net kind of outcome varies, you don't end up with meaningful allocations. We've done a few special articles at town meeting here and there. And and it matter, you know, the ratings agencies like to see this as at least a statement of acknowledgement by the management that we we understand this liability. And we've now moved to, again, a minor contribution, but just getting the foot in the door, hopefully towards more sizable contributions over time. And I think that that's great that the Audit Committee's, I think, asked, if I understand correctly, my answer is basically what what's an annual number that we need to actually start turning the liability in the other direction? I would be pleasantly surprised if it's only six figures. But if that's the case, at least it sets a goal. So we have a better understanding from a policy standpoint of, you know, is this we doing something, are we really doing something here? Or, you know, should we probably fix a couple more sidewalks?
If you said to me, you know, put 100,000 in, I'd say, to what end?
Right, what does that get you?
Like, right, you know, because right now, there might be something else warranting 100,000 that we really can't afford to not have.
Right, I mean, we regularly defer millions of capital requests.
Short term goals.
And so then there are, you know, in in my opinion, in the the short run, more short run, I'm saying short in the scheme of this decade and not two. I think, you know, something that's really important is employee contribution model, which is something we've started negotiating. Nothing substantial, but similar thought process to now talking about actuarial studies. Newer personnel in pension systems today pay a larger portion of their salary into a pension fund, including like a surcharge on that, depending on your income and when you're hired, not just for the assumed liability of their pension in the future, but also to basically do makeup payments for prior actuarial studies that were deducting far too little out of public sector paychecks. And so I think that's an area that we need to be pretty serious about pursuing as well.
So negotiating into the contract, were there there's a contribution?
Yes.
Seems to me, I don't see any other possibility.
So I feel very, very, very unforeseen change in the revenue picture.
Exactly, exactly. And we're, you know, a single, single breed community. We know our financial challenges. I I could not fathom any other way where you're going to pick up six figure amounts annually that you can afford to set aside towards OPEB.
Probably. If you do operate, if we're looking at the operating budget, that's kind of what we had to do with snow and ice over time as these weather events became increasingly severe. The account used to be significantly smaller and, you know, we realized it's just running into the right functions and gradually ramped it up over time. So that is, that's an option. But again, it would be very gradual. And I think having the figures from the auditors on like.
Absolutely.
What's an actual target here? So because I mean, really, anything, once you start getting over 50, 60, 70, 80,000, 100,000, you're you're making value decisions on, you know, a number so large that you're funding a hypothetical future liability today rather than, you know, a teacher or a firefighter or a soccer player. So it's 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 a tough call. But I guess I think employee contributions are important.
Without that as a without that as a component, I I don't see it ever ever attaining any keeping up with it. I think it absolutely not going to be a component. There are other things too, as premiums, you know, you could reduce premiums, nothing serious, but there has to be multiple pieces, multiple people contributing to this in order to make a mark.
Well, right, it's it's important to to know that offsetting future liabilities helps delay decisions about things like replacements for the board, right? Which is ideal. And I'm not saying here I haven't said to unions that, you know, none of us can mind our successors 40 years from now. Hopefully, health insurance is not functioning exactly as it's right now. And 40 years at least, some of us, the budget's contemplating it. But we can't kind of make guarantees, oh, if only there was X contribution or this economic thing happened, then then the discussion, the no future select will ever be have to take about a discussion. And that would be a comforting and easy thing to say, but it wouldn't be true. That's an option that all Select Boards in Massachusetts have and and one that at least we never want to find ourselves having to take every active posture on short notice. And so that's why we've tried to be really thoughtful with with our financial position across the board. And OPEB is certainly a top one. So just one, the click is that employers watching are not talking about shifting the mortgage rate.
No, no, not at all. Absolutely.
Just just thinking of these things are hard, really.
Yeah.
As as these liabilities grow.
Right.
You you do reach points, not unlike with physical assets, right? You reach a point, you know, something has to give, you know, change. We're trying to make sure we're being thoughtful and having good information on what we need to be doing here over here and maybe we have in the right direction.
And I do, I would like to point out also that our our contributions, however small to your point, Connor, I think are very important, very valid, because it shows the state that it's on your radar and you're doing something. Because there are communities who literally do nothing, zero, zip, zilch. So if at one point it was relief in the future, the idea was that the state would come and say, well, you know, show me what you've done. And if you're if you're a community that has made effort, then your relief might be larger than a community that has had zero effort because you're taking this seriously, trying to do something. So I our nominal contributions, though small, I do think are important.
They're they're also important to the bond rating agencies as well to see that we're not ignoring this. We do, we do have a plan. We acknowledge the reality and are trying to address it. To circle back, Jen, to your question about the actual benefit payment amounts and how those change over the years, for the past five years, they've ranged from three to the most current 3.8 million. That includes refunds of member contributions, so it's not just the benefit payments. And it's not linear, so it's gone up and down. So we're not seeing a trend where it's going, you know, up by a certain percentage or a certain amount evenly every year.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so if we don't have any more questions on OPEB, I'd like to just segue over to Kelly Lamb, who is finance, the Audit Committee representative from the Finance Committee, had asked what I thought was a great question, which was, are there other concerns that we haven't talked about that the auditors are seeing? And so that led to a discussion on IT and cybersecurity. So Mr. Boyd shared that in his opinion, many communities seem to be at what he termed Phase One of assessing their vulnerabilities and that there's a general sense of not knowing what we don't know. And so Wendy can speak more about this, but she mentioned, you know, questions from our insurance carriers. So why don't you, if you want to fill in a little bit about that?
Yeah, so that that is an area that our insurance carriers are more and more concerned about in order to cover us for any any thefts or things like that. We are looking at assessing our network. There will be a capital request to do a network assessment and possibly, you know, a future capital request to to do even more to, you know, after the assessment is made. But we are, we are looking at that. I know our team manager, Mike Deltano, he's been working with one of the vendors that we use to get a proposal for that.
For for a network security audit, actually, of both software systems we're using, the hardware we rely on as part of just the ongoing growing concern. I mean, we've had, we've used state grant programs and had certain trainings relating to cybersecurity and best practices for folks, a lot of, you know, malicious attacks or the linchance is human error. You know, people not understanding, recognizing malicious emails and things of that nature. And we know that's not enough. And so, you know, network security audit is on tap, something we're trying to be to get done this year or start this year, at least depending how long that goes. And our liabilities are mine, we do have cyber liability right now. As part of their basically penciling their own concerns, they're starting to get much more active, including doing on announce, basically, you know, what they call that when they have when they try and test your network by getting into it and checking for liabilities. They've done that a few times. And there's a few minor things so far that they caught and were able to fix quickly, which is good. Nothing major, although I'm sure if it was, I wouldn't say it in a public meeting. But I that's, I appreciate the Audit Committee's concern. That is a growing area of concern in everyone's sectors, but particularly for the municipal government as well.
Are we able to learn from communities because Massachusetts has had communities taken hostage? Have we, is there communication? Is there after action reports or best practices being pushed out? Or are these communities keeping a tight lip to just trying to solve this problem? Because I'm thinking, how many communities now Massachusetts has been?
A handful. So.
Some large.
So some of that has informed the, you know, what I referenced as far as the training for personnel. That was something we actually did a time ago during COVID. In the wake of a few of those attacks, the State Executive Office of Security and IT, I don't know the exact acronym, I think they'll forgive me, but they rolled out a statewide technical grant program where you you could, it was voluntary. You would subject all employees across the organization to, I believe it was monthly or quarterly phishing attempts with analytics routed back through my office and IT on which departments were doing the best at deciphering bad actors and attempts at phishing, which I think has been really key to most of those municipal level breaches. And it was not, we needed additional training targeted based on their actual output or success rates. And so we we rolled that out over the course of, I think, 12 to 18 months with a pretty, pretty good participation rate. And it was informed in part by those municipal breaches. I don't know as far as, I haven't myself seen a kind of white paper of what went wrong in those individual communities. It it very well may exist, I'm just not sure. There are partners trying to stand up. Bridgewater State University is actually attempting to stand up what they're calling a cyber range, which is going to be hopefully a kind of state of the art hybrid facility, both in person and remote for government staff, including in particular non-IT experts, because that's really where the vulnerabilities lie. Usually, it's not the IT director who's accidentally giving his password or her password to a malicious actor. It could be generalists, you know, and so they are working to stand up and make it open to municipalities. So far, they're prioritizing Flinney County, which we're attempting to dissuade them of. We will be working with them on that. But there's there's a kind of growing industry of options for people to start engaging with us more than we intend to.
Thank you.
And the community contact is open again, so there's some opportunity there to to try to get some grants or assistance from that.
Okay. We we also do use a software that will prevent you from double clicking like an executable file, which has definitely helped to cut down too on on any viruses and things like that. Some people do still have that ability to allow a file, if it's not recognized, to to execute it. But I mean, whenever whenever I get that, I always call Mike like immediately. But I I definitely think that that has has made a difference because a lot of times, you know, employees will not just open the email, there'll be an attachment. They go to open the attachment and that's that's when things happen. So that that's definitely been a bonus for us. It's not a complete fail safe, but it's definitely made a difference.
Well, it sounds like the Audit Committee is doing great work. It has a real handle on what these what these issues are. And, you know, somebody like Kelly that's new, that was a great perception from her, you know, about cybersecurity and, you know, I guess I really think of that coming through the Audit Committee on first first pass. So, you know, that was really great.
Yeah, I was I was really glad she asked the question and that, you know, we got into that subject matter because it truly, you know, it's not, it's not number crunching. So it's not normally something. But, you know, when you think about financial security liabilities, that's it's absolutely a huge, a huge issue, so.
And thank you, Mark, for serving on that committee, Jen.
Actually, really quick, on a similar note, something that is really interesting to see as well in our, the bond rating process now incorporates how resilient you are to climate change. So Moody's is asking questions about whether or not your municipal vulnerability preparedness community, what your wetlands restoration things are. I think this is a good thing. We're trying to be serious about what our risks are. We have to kind of acknowledge what those environmental threats are. I didn't mean to be so literal about environment. Don't talk about the environment, you understand what I'm saying, organizational view. So a lot of these agencies that we rely on for clean bills of health are getting much more serious about these things as they should.
So, uh, a lot of these agencies that we rely on for clean bills of health are, are getting, uh, much more serious about these things as they should, which means we're willing to.
And then they've also asked if we've been victims of any cyber crimes too.
All right, so, so overall, the, the twenty-twenty-one, um, financial audit was, was good, clean. Um, the financials were strong, our largest reserve balance to date, no material issues to report. And so, you know, we commend, um, Wendy and her team and everybody who crunches numbers in any department, because they all roll up into this reporting for continued due diligence, for continued diligence with sound financial practices day in and day out, and that lead to these good results, so thank you to all of your staff for doing a great job.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Jen.
All right, we are down to the wire here. Uh, acceptance of minutes dated August twenty-second.
So moved.
Second, Lamb.
Bodra and Lamb, all in favor? And town administrator notes?
Uh, so just a note, if anyone wants to, right, skip over this, if anyone wants to get an actual tour in person of our buildings that we're working on replacing, there will be a public tour, uh, with police and firefighters at, uh, Lowthrup Street Station, six-thirty, uh, Wednesday next week on the twenty-first. And there will also be a public tour, uh, at DPW on Center Street, um, Tuesday, the twenty-seventh at six P M. So those tours are always informative and fun, and folks should go if they're curious.
Excellent. Select Board notes, I'll start with your notes.
Sure, I just want to give a shout out to, um, Joe Pitti and Jeff Page with the Recreation Department, uh, in particular Jeff. Um, I am coaching field hockey, which is almost hilarious because I never actually taught, played field hockey, but my daughter's passion is infectious, so I've learned the game, um, and have joined as a coach. And the organization around creating this recreation program and response to demand from the community has been just amazing. Um, and the support from Jeff, um, he was texting the day, the, the first game to make sure everything went okay. Um, it's just been, there's a true partnership, um, and the kids love it, it's really translating in an awesome way. Um, so I talked to Kristin Kennedy in passing a while back, and she had mentioned this was kind of a, a goal of, to have, this is being a, an opportunity for, um, kids to be caught, you know, to be tapped into sports younger, and opportunities for them to play recreationally and to pick their different paths, so I love it, um, and I just wanted to give them a shout out, because it's been really impressive seeing it in action. And, um, you know, just great work, so.
That's great, thank you for being a coach.
Yeah. I am the assistant coach, so I, I get, and, at, at the grade one, grade two level, it's a lot of just herding, herding those little kittens, so. And they're adorable, our first game Saturday was awesome, they did a fantastic job, and they're, a lot of the parents are like, wow, I didn't expect the ball to be moving down the field quite as much. Everyone thought it was just gonna be kind of a free-for-all, like the ball stuck in one place, but they, they put their work in.
That's great.
Yeah, so very exciting stuff all around.
Jamie?
I just want to, uh, plug the Municipal Building Committee and the Green Communities Committee's booths that will be at the NRT. So, and then I believe on the eighth, there's another, they're gonna be at Borderway, and I believe Municipal Buildings Committee with another, I'm not right. Anyway, there's another date, but it'll start with the second, October second, NRT. Uh, a lot of great things, as, as well as the Select Board, I believe, will be there with some pretty faces. Um, that's it.
I'd like to, uh, thank Chief Alexander for yesterday, as we know, yesterday was nine eleven. It was the twenty-first anniversary, and it was Chief Alexander's first time doing that in the town of Easton, and he did an outstanding job. It was, it's just always a solemn event, but he did a, a very nice job, and, uh, I was glad to be there.
It was very nice. So to, um, I can cross that one off my list, but to build on that, um, I pulled this out of the Town Crier, and if people don't know, you should be signed up for the Town Crier and get that, uh, list of everything happening in the community once a week by email. So I saw the Fire Prevention Week, Open Houses coming up, and the kickoff, um, is Saturday, September twenty-fourth, from eleven to two. This year marks the hundredth year of fire prevention. So there's always a, a lot of, uh, people at that, and it's a lot of fun, you get to see all the equipment, and they have a lot of interactive activities. Pizza refreshment and cookies will be served, there'll be great door prizes and raffle baskets. Uh, the proceeds will be going to the Eastern Food Pantry, and it's gonna be a great free family fun day, so, um, mark that on your calendars, September twenty-fourth, eleven to two.
I just want to give a shout out to the twenty-three percent of the Easton voters who actually came to the polls or voted early or voted by mail, uh, for the primary, and, uh, I appreciate their, their time and effort, and I'm hoping that we have a even better turnout come November eighth.
And also to the staff, uh, I forgot about, but I did not forget about, there's so much going on, that, that, uh, the new voting regulations, working through weekends, is, is, is a lot, they did an awesome job, went off about a hitch with a lot of changes. Uh, so thank you to the clerk's office and the election workers and all those folks.
Select Board room was turned into a poll, early polling place.
Uh, and it will be very shortly again. Are we even in here again next time, or?
Maybe.
Maybe.
We're like a committee without a home, bouncing around from place to place.
Just for the record, that's why I was late tonight, I did go to the prowling mall.
Sorry about that.
All right, well, um, if there's no other comments or questions, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Bodra and Lamb, all in favor? You know, thanks, everybody, have a great week.